...was just a person who was designated to provide for a household or family member. In 2010, that expanded to allow a caregiver to operate as a small business and be designated to provide for up to five qualifying patients. With that, there were a number of additional regulations that came into effect. One of them, though, was removed, and that was one to allow compliance inspections. And I think that was a mistake to remove that from the law. I think Representative Sanderson's bill could address a lot of this as long as there are clear guidelines of how the inspections are going to happen, what are being looked for. As was pointed out earlier, with the dispensaries, there is a clear process of if you are being inspected, what is expected of you. There's clear information that's expected as reports. Now, if you look towards the end of the timeline, there was a bill last year from the Department of Health and Human Services that would have addressed inspections and complaint investigations. That bill, LD 1779, would have allowed no-notice inspections of caregivers. It would have allowed the department to impose penalties on caregivers without a clear schedule of what those penalties were, without a clear process for remedying the problems. With the dispensaries, when there's a problem with the -- if there's a problem at the inspection, there is a consent agreement, so they can come into compliance. No similar process has been proposed for caregivers. The proposal last year also would have allowed the department to fine a caregiver for the cost of the inspection, for the cost of the investigation and the court fees. I think that's unfair. I think there need to be clear guidelines so people who are caregivers, just like any other small business, know what is being expected of them. Last year, that language was removed from the bill by the committee, and the department was directed to come back to this committee at the beginning of session and make a report with recommendations of how to implement complaint investigations, what a clear process of what they would be looking for, and to recommend whether rulemaking or legislation would be necessary to implement this. Unfortunately, on March 1st, the department entered into a contract with the Maine Sheriffs Association to simply implement complaint investigations without having a clear policy and without there being clear training. When caregivers have spoken to the compliance inspectors, they're retired sheriffs who are coming in, asking, you know, "Are you looking for how I'm cultivating my plants? Are you just looking at plant count?" They get different answers. A lot of the issues that have been raised earlier around people diverting marijuana, that is most appropriately addressed through law enforcement. Law enforcement can obtain a warrant if there is reason to believe that a person is diverting marijuana to people who are not allowed to have it. These should be administrative inspections. You know, if someone is a crook, then they should be dealt with by law enforcement as a crook. But if someone is trying to operate a responsible small business, they should be dealt with the same as other small business operators. And there is a difference between dispensaries and caregivers, and that should be acknowledged in the regulations. There is no limit on the amount of plants a dispensary can operate. Most dispensaries are not home businesses. With a caregiver, they're operating out of their home. There should be notice, especially if you have family there, if you have plants on a cycle. And there should be regulations that meet the scale of the business. There's different regulations in place for Madison Greenhouses versus someone who's growing tomatoes for a farmer's market. That distinction in scale should be included in any regulations that come about from this committee. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you very much. Representative Sanderson.
Thank you, Hillary. You have a vast knowledge of a lot of the caregivers that we have in this state. Do many of them also work outside the greenhouse that they have in their home? Do they work at other jobs? So there's a good chance if there is no notice, they just won't be home?
There are -- I would say it's a minority of caregivers who that is their full-time job. And I don't know anyone making anything near $100,000 being a legal caregiver. If they're making the amount that was being described, I don't see how it's being done within the law unless they're already independently wealthy. But for most caregivers, they already have a farm, they already have a health care business, or they already have a job that they're driving to. This is a way to supplement their income, to help cover costs. But if there are no-notice inspections, most likely you're going to be driving down a dirt road and finding no one there necessarily, or finding a family member who doesn't know, for one thing, doesn't know, is this sheriff coming for a criminal matter, or is this just a department inspection? And that distinction needs to be made. Contracting with the Sheriff's Association really blurs that line. Caregivers should not be treated like criminals. They should be treated like legitimate business people. And if they are criminals, we already have the laws in place to address that.
Representative Burkey.
Thank you. Ms. Lister, I'm just wondering, we heard from many caregivers, and most everybody that we heard from said they were paying taxes. Is that the norm as far as you're concerned? Or is that even normal?
It depends on who they're getting their advice from. It really differs from attorney and accountant to another attorney. Some will say nothing in the law allows a caregiver to sell marijuana, therefore you are providing a service, so you should not pay sales tax. Others point out the fact that on the caregiver application, you sign a declaration saying that you agree to pay taxes for the sale of marijuana. The other thing is there is no tax category for caregivers like there are for dispensaries right now. So for caregivers who are paying taxes, there's no way to look through the current tax categories and see these were caregivers. You're going to see porticulture, greenhouses, alternative health care. You're not going to see caregiver-specific.
So I'm hoping that you'll be here for our work session.
And I will be here for the work session, yes.
Representative Hammond.
I just wanted to thank you for passing out this time line.
You're welcome. Thank you.
See, no additional questions. Thank you very much. Additional testimony in favor of any of these bills currently before us? Seeing none. All right. Testimony opposed to any of these bills currently before us that we've not already heard as it was lumped in with in favor?
Seems like it's been a long time.
Senator Brady, Representative Kattin, and members of the Health and Human Services Committee. I am Becky Goodboyster again with Wellness Connection of Maine. I'm the Director of Community and Education at that operation which runs four of Maine's eight nonprofit state-licensed dispensaries. I am also the Secretary of the Maine Association of Dispensary Operators. My testimony here is on behalf of that organization. Before I go on, I will add in for context that Maine's -- well, the four WCM dispensaries in Maine are currently serving about 8,000 patients around the state. And we -- while there is no limit on the plants that we can grow, we do not find a need to grow anywhere near six plants for each of those patients. Now, I know there's different economies of scale when you're talking about a dispensary versus a home business, but just for context. I am here to testify in opposition to LD 5 and in slightly less vigorous opposition to LD 1258. And a lot of, you know, the themes here have been covered, but just quickly, the medical cannabis program in Maine, as it stands today, does have two tiers. You know, option one for a patient is to visit one of the medical marijuana dispensaries. We are held to a set of rigorous standards, as has been mentioned. I think there are about 18 pages of regulations for us in terms of operations, everything from inventory control down to the types of security that our facilities can have or should have. The second tier is the caregiver system. And this was originally, as Hillary pointed out, intended to be a very personal, one-on-one program. It was later expanded to one to five. You know, so there is an individual who's dealing directly with five different patients. And as is fitting for what I would call a micro-business, really, there was very little regulation put into place, and that made a lot of sense at the time. I'm going to skip a little bit here, just in the interest of time, and go back to what Paul said. And we're at a point here in Maine where a third tier, a middle tier, does make sense. You know, this is not an unusual or anomalous situation. Dispensaries actually grew out of caregivers, right? They got together, somebody had a commercial property, they traded medicine, they began selling medicine, and then suddenly a municipality would look around and say, "Oh, look, we've got dispensaries. What should we do?" And they regulated them. In California, there's a patchwork. There's still no state-level regulation. In Washington State, they did not regulate them on a statewide level. And what we saw this past week was that now that Washington State has legal adult-use marijuana, they have taken that unregulated medical program and smooshed it into that adult-use program because there was not a consistent set of regulations. And I would hate to see that happen in Maine, and I think we're running the risk of that happening if we don't wrap our arms around this middle tier at some point. I also want to say that we know that many caregivers hold themselves to the highest safety and production standards. They're operating in compliance, whether anybody is checking or not. And it is unfortunate that there are some folks who view the lack of regulation as an invitation to grow the maximum and funnel it into the illicit market. Others are exploiting loopholes and creating situations where communities feel uncomfortable. I don't think that those people are here today. I think the people you're hearing from are people who care about this and who are ready to embrace some level of regulatory oversight that will allow their businesses to flourish, whether they want to stay at that very individualized one-on-one level or move into a middle tier. And I see that my time is ticking down as they stand, neither LD 5 nor 1258 provide the sorts of regulatory protections that will, we think, allow that middle tier to expand in a way that won't attract federal attention and that will be good for communities through Maine. Thank you again. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you. So this middle tier, again, is something I -- I'm very curious what this middle tier might end up looking -- what it could look like in terms of what are the -- what are we talking about specifically in terms of the regulations this middle tier might face versus the low [inaudible]. So, and it's at least encouraging to me to hear that there's -- there seems to be at least some voices on either side of this who say this seems like something that can be worked on. So maybe for the work session, if some of the -- if we could see kind of more flesh out idea what this middle tier might look like.
I'll be back. I'm sure everybody who has ideas about that will be. I would just say right now for the record that one kind of obvious, common sense place would be, are you operating out of your home? In which case, there will still be regulation. If I run a barber shop or, you know, something like that on my basement, there's some level of standards. Or are you working out of a commercial facility? And it seems to me that when you take that step and you're providing a commodity to an increased number of folks who are no longer personal, family, or friends, there's a response, a set of responsibilities that come with that. And I think it's, you know, really smart in this state. And I have to thank this committee for the amount of education that you have done on your own to, you know, come up to speed on this. So I think these are fixable things. As 5 and 1258 stand right now, we would not be comfortable with either of them, although, again, less vigorously opposed to 1258.
All right. Representative Hammond.
Thank you. I'm going to ask a question I've already asked a couple times, but I think I might get the definitive answer now.
No pressure.
You say in your testimony that the regulations are enforced by the Division of Licensing and Regulatory Services via unannounced and scheduled inspections. So the dispensaries are subject to unannounced inspections?
Yes.
And that does not harm the plant when those take place?
In our -- I can't speak for each of the dispensaries because we're all growing in slightly different configurations. But for us, we only ever have one small room flowering at one time. So in that cycle, we're opening the door when it's dark would damage those plants. We always have plants in other, you know, stages of growth that can be inspected. And then, as Leo said, you know, like a green light bulb and a very quick visit. It's not ideal, but it can be done. We also have security infrastructure so that if somebody can't get into a room, you know, we can move the cameras around and kind of show them what's in there.
Okay. And what's with the inspection, simply the count of plants?
Plant counts. We keep our nutrients or the salts and chemicals, not compounds, that we use for nutrients in a storage room that is separate, not in the grow rooms. Not everybody, again, has that same configuration. But yes, the DHHS, DLRs, does an annual inspection that can be scheduled, like, within a week, like, we'll know Monday through Friday. But they can also drop in and are welcome to at any time.
Okay. And are those -- they are regularly scheduled?
We have an annual inspection, so at least once a year, somebody does come in. And those, again, they don't tell us, okay, you know, Tuesday at noon, be ready, get everything clean. They say, you know, "Oh, it looks like we'll be able to get out there the second we can make."
And to be an unannounced visit, does that have to be triggered by a complaint or a connection?
I know they can be. I think that possibly if there were more personnel doing those visits, and maybe Mr. Albert can speak more to this, you know, we welcome that. I would assume that right now they might be complaint-triggered. But again, Mr. Albert might be better.
So this is a follow-up question I have. So it does sound at least a little bit like, and correct me if I'm wrong, that as a dispensary, you know, larger operation, the unplanned visits because of the economies of scale of it, because you can have things in different rooms, because you can have video equipment, it sounds like that's less of a problem to your grow operation than it might be for a smaller operation.
If I had 30 plants in my storage room in my basement and somebody had to come in right then and the lights were off, yes, that would be a problem. But again, I think the more steps that, you know, small business people, as you're moving from that micro-business point to a small business, you know, if you're in a commercial facility, these are things that you need to be thinking of. And, you know, I applaud the folks who do work with their towns and cities to say, "Hey, come on in. I'm doing things the way it should be done."
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Representative Burkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Do you think for the work session, you could just delineate very clearly what you think of the different tiers to be, tier one, tier two, tier three, just so that we're really clear and know exactly what's going on?
I would be happy to, and I think you -- this is something that's going to -- yes, some more on that. Thank you. Thank you, Mark.
All right. Thank you very much. Additional testimony in opposition to any of these bills?
Again, my name's Joyce Devens. I'm from Augusta. I'm going to try to be brief. I'm here in opposition against LD 726. I believe that inspections with no notice, as you've heard, you know, many of our caregivers have jobs, other responsibilities, they may not be there, is unacceptable, not only for that reason, but the statement she made about if you open the door and you've got your 30 plants, it is going to make a difference, that's accurate. The statement the gentleman made about one light not making a difference, that light bulb right there on over our plants can absolutely hermaphrodite them, 100% yes. It is damaging to the quality of our medicine. So I also have an issue with that, and this might be just procedural, maybe you have something in place with this, but spider mites are a common ailment to indoor growers. They cut -- you have to kill your plants if you get spider mites. If your inspector goes into one facility that has spider mites and then inspects three or four other facilities in that same day, you are guaranteed to be spreading those spider mites to the other facilities. It's not an if, it's not a maybe, it's not a they might get there. 100% yes, you are infecting someone's medicine that renders it useless. I also have an issue with the department shall adopt routine technical rules as defined in Title V, Chapter 375, Subchapter 2, and governing in the manner in which it is considered applications for and renewals of the registry identification card for primary caregivers, including rules governing. That is departmental overreach. I don't think that they need to be doing that on their own. I think that they are already not fulfilling the things that they have been asked to do by various committees, and I find it to be unacceptable. And then lastly on that one, I understand that there does need to be some level of assurances that caregivers are acting properly. And I just want to leave you with, a caregiver is to a business as a farmer's market is to health food. A dispensary is to a business as Whole Foods is to health food. You do not regulate a farmer's market in the same way that you regulate Whole Foods. There is a vast difference, and I think that that should be respected, even at the 36 plants, unlimited patients. There is a vast, vast difference. That's all for LD 726. I also oppose LD 266. I believe that it's already in place. It's DHHS's responsibility to answer any calls from law enforcement regarding whether or not someone is a caregiver. The gentleman who spoke very eloquently in favor of it had said, well, he goes through half the investigation only to find out they're not a caregiver. Well, that's because DHHS is not doing their job. It's their responsibility to notify the police if they are asked, and they need to do it in a timely manner. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. See no questions? Well, additional testimony in opposition to any of these bills?
Good afternoon. One more evening.
We're getting there.
Yes. Before we start, my name is Steve Rule, and I am the Chairman of the Board for the Medical Marijuana Caregivers of Maine, and I hail from the metropolis of Lincoln. And we've heard a lot of talk today about how great Maine's medical marijuana program is. I did get a chance to print off a report card put out by ASA, Americans for Safe Access. Although Maine only got a B, we got the highest grade in the country by far, okay? And we have people calling from all over the country saying, "What are you guys doing right?" And so I want to make sure today that we don't head down a path of not following that path of doing things right and creating too much regulation in this burgeoning business, this upcoming business. And I did that first because I'm usually a pretty happy guy, and I hate testifying against things, but I'm going to have to right now. LD 766, the act to require medical marijuana caregivers to get an electrical permit. We are against that. We could support it if it was amended with some changes. Requiring -- required permitting and inspections should be limited to landlord-owned multifamily dwellings and/or commercial buildings and to caregivers who serve more than three to four patients. Privately-owned homes have already been inspected and need no further inspection. They're inspected when they're built. A caregiver with three or four patients doesn't use as much electricity as folks have been led to believe. If you think about it, to grow for one patient requires somewhere in the neighborhood of about 1,300 to 1,400 watts of power, if you consider all the electrical uses. If you think about your own home or perhaps your grandmother's home, they have a little small space heater and a little Polonos, whatever. Those draw 1,500 watts. So a small space heater that grandma uses to keep her feet warm uses more power than it takes to grow medical marijuana for one patient. I don't want to see medical marijuana caregivers being singled out for special treatment that nobody else gets. It's almost like we're being treated like we're criminals. We don't know what we're doing. Houses are inspected. They have to be under state law. But we don't need another level of laws on businesses that will cover a structure that has already been inspected, okay? Because, again, the power usages are not that big when you have a small, three to four-person operation. Once you get into multifamily units, I could see the need for inspection because you could be endangering another family if you didn't know what you were doing. And you're also most likely renting, okay? And then the other one I'd like to talk about is 266, an act that will allow access to law enforcement officers of registered caregivers. Law enforcement already has the mechanism to inspect caregivers if they suspect are breaking laws. And in many communities, like in my community in Lincoln, the police department and the fire department share a secretary, okay? That document's going to go to the secretary, and there's the old joke, telephone, telegraph, tell Johnny, okay? Because that's how -- it's a way of disseminating information. You'd have to be old white to maybe remember that. But when you get in small communities, these folks talk, okay? Police officers talk, fire departments talk, and they're all mixed together, and they're all sharing common resources. And that leads to harassment, to potential theft. We need to do everything we can to protect our caregivers and not give this unfettered access to their information. If they -- if the police suspect that something's really going wrong, just like any other activity that they suspect us of, they can get a warrant. And the mechanism is already there for them to do that. And I'm out of time.
All right. Any questions? See no questions? Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Additional testimony in opposition to any of these bills? Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. I've got so many scribblings from listening to people talk, because what you plan to say ends up totally different. Everybody's blood sugar is okay for listening. There's a great book called Thinking Fast and Thinking Slow that shows that judges have harsher punishments when they haven't eaten their lunch than when they do by three or four months.
Well, because that's fifteen years.
Yeah, I know. They're important. Yeah. My name's Thomas Falvey. I'm a patient and a caregiver, excuse me, from Ocean Park. I am here in opposition of LD 266. To me, the wording seems superfluous and repetitive. The records already may be disclosed to achieve the limited goals of a specific investigation. There's no reason to add an exception to allow law enforcement to rule out a caregiver when verifying reports of criminal activity. Is that not what is already stated in the existing statute? Would verifying reports of criminal activity not be a limited goal of a specific investigation? It seems to me it would be, and there's no reason to change this wording. And from listening to that York police chief, I think that what his complaint seems to be, seems to be a lack of following what is already in the law by DHHS, not expanding what is permitted by law enforcement. The next bill that I'm opposed to is LD 726. I think that the inspections by the department as defined on lines 13 and 14 are too broad and ill-defined, and line 17 through 30 of Section 3 are too broad. What are minimum security requirements, minimum record-keeping requirements? These are not defined. And I think, I mean, it's come out that 726 seems to be this pro-dispensary suggestion, and 1258 seems to be this caregiver-friendly suggestion, which I would agree with, you know, and I can't blame the dispensaries for putting this forward. Competition is scary when it hasn't been there, you know? If DHHS were to allow unlimited dispensaries and have competition, you know, on an unlimited scale, I think you'd see things change fast and drastically as opposed to what has boiled down to over the years as a state-sponsored monopoly. And I don't think that the people involved in the dispensaries got into it expecting it to end up operating in this manner, but it essentially has become that. There's no -- there's eight of them, nine of them. What -- are there nine plumbers in Maine that do all the plumbing? Are there five electricians that just, you know, go around doing all the electrical work? There's not. I mean, so I think that what you're seeing, you know, the invisible hand of the economy is coming from caregivers. Caregivers are the lifeblood of free-market competition. They're the closest thing you have to free-market competition when it comes to this specific economy. And so you're seeing people like who are specializing in making RSO for cancer patients. You're seeing people who are specializing in having CBD-only strains. A dispensary's handcuffed. They've got so many people coming in their doors that they've got to just be able to take care of them, you know? But if you have unlimited numbers of people coming into this who have all sorts of different ideas, you're going to see a proliferation of creativity and creation that isn't otherwise there in a monopoly. I see I'm out of time, and I'd just add that E.O. Wilson, the famous biologist, states that diversity in an ecosystem equals stability. I would beg you that the more diversity you can have in caregivers and those who are permitted to grow medical marijuana, the more stable and better this market will be. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. See no questions? Additional testimony in opposition to any of these bills?
Good afternoon. My name is Amy Green. I'm from Monroe now, but I grew up in Bethel, and I graduated from Tulsi. I went to [inaudible]. I went to college out of state. I'm one of those smart people that was going to leave and stay away, and then I saw things happen and came back. I am, I work as a caregiver, but I also have a part-time job helping an arborist, and I volunteer at my elementary school. So I'm here in opposition to 726 and 266. Again, the random inspections, you would come so far up my dirt road to find me, not at home, and it would be sad, I would see you on my camera later, but it would be a waste of resources. 726 proposes to enforce guidelines that don't exist, as has been stated. I'd love to be, I don't know how to be a part of developing guidelines if I'm just an individual independent caregiver, but if you want those sort of people on your work group, I'd be happy to be there. So much has already been covered. There is this climate of transitioning from the mindset of people who advocate for marijuana as existing in a realm of criminality versus being service providers, and I think 266 would just be socially insensitive to that. I think that we've done so much to heal our relationships with law enforcement so far that that would just exacerbate something that has come a long way. So keeping it in the hands of the social services is the right thing to do. I do hope that it draws attention to the system malfunctions. I'm glad it was proposed, just so that we can have a functional system, but I think it is DHHS's job. I do want to say in relation to taxes, I wish I could propose that we were to equally tax the pharmaceutical companies. It would be a great boon to the state. They are profit-driven, as opposed to arguably this lower first tier of caregivers that I belong to, which I would stay at. I know my, my patients are, two of them are family members, and the others I've had consistently for four years. I know them intimately, I grow for them. I don't really want to provide to anybody else, it's, it's not my main thing. So it scares me that I would be subjected to the same types of scrutiny that a large dispensary business would be subjected to. I don't have the funds to do that, I don't have the energy to do that, and it would just make my patients lose out, I think. That's all. Just saying. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Seeing no questions? Appreciate your testimony. Additional testimony in opposition to any of these bills?
Hello, distinguished members of the Health and Human Services Committee. My name is Thomas O'Beir, and I live in Sumner, Maine. I was involved in the 2000 initiative, and I've been fully active ever since. I'm also a registered caregiver and have many concerns with the origins and origins of the rules the department decides to implement their own rules and the proposed future rules. I will start with a brief history in my view. My concern starts with rulemaking. On the 2009 initiative, it gave out only eight nonprofit licenses, with four of those licenses going to one organization. These licenses were issued by Catherine Cobb, who now sits on the Board of Directors for the Wellness Connection. This may be legal, but in my mind, my eyes, it's immoral. With only eight nonprofit dispensaries, a semi-monopoly is created, and Mito, Main Executive Association of Dispensary Owners, forms and hires lobbyists to further their agenda of monopolizing and capitalizing of a system that is designed to help people. Further proof of their agenda lies in LD-2, an act to allow dispensaries to operate full profit. I believe that the barrage of medical marijuana bills this session is a concerted effort by Mito and DHHS to regulate caregiver model out of existence. Dispensary fees bring the state $120,000 annually. With over 1,700 registered caregivers in the state, the estimated income of application fees would range from the low end at $510,000 to the high end at $2.5 million, depending on how many patients the 1,700 caregivers apply for. LD-766 is an act designed to regulate the caregiver's models into non-existence. As written, the bill does not say which code a caregiver in a residential building must follow. If the commercial code is used, then very few residential homes will pass a commercial inspection without complete rewire costs of tens of thousands of dollars. This act also changes rulemaking on electrical inspections to become routine technical, so the department, which is clearly catering to Mito's lobbyists, can easily change which code a residential building must follow to commercial and eliminate most of the nonprofit dispensary's competition. There is no protocol in this act to address sterility of the inspectors. Inspector traveling from grow, one grow to another is a risk of contaminating gallons of pesticide. If I was growing vegetables to sell to more than five people under the same lights I use for marijuana production, I would not need a special permit. Security is always a top priority when cultivating marijuana in your home. I don't feel comfortable letting a complete stranger into my home to do an electrical inspection. LD-726, an act to increase patient safety in Maine's medical marijuana program, is another act that will regulate caregiver model into non-existence. On September 27, 2011, LD-1296 became law. This removed DHHS inspection of caregivers. Last year, your committee voted against these inspections. Currently, without statute and without routine technical authority, DHHS is carrying out inspections. The variant inspection is illegal since the inspectors are not enforcement, not law enforcement, and they're not elected officials, therefore are not allowed by statute to enter a grow facility. Inspections at any time unannounced in your home is a violation of privacy and causes undue stress for anyone living in the home. DHHS also wants routine technical authority governing the consideration of issuing licenses. This could easily lead to a simple rule that makes caregiving licenses unattainable. I strongly disagree with giving DHHS any more authority after it's already drawn lawsuits over its inspections in online portal, which were implemented without statute or power. The act would also give DHHS the authority to make sure caregivers pay taxes. There are already laws in place to make sure taxes are properly filed. This act also ironically empowers DHHS to use funds from the medical marijuana program to contract for inspections. DHHS has already contacted...